And the use of the disclaimer is going to help us actually bring about a better charter and a better way of understanding without having to continue to refer back to terminology and things that are just simply out of date and no longer enforceable by the state of Michigan.
Thank you. One quick question for you, Mr. Gierba, to break this down into its most, into very simple terms. Would it be fair to say that the subsequent motion, 23-192, and the proposed changes that the group is recommending be placed on the February ballot are very easy to understand and could be described as innocuous?
The term innocuous, I mean, that's always a bigger word. I think for us, it's really just a clean, quick way of resolving some of these little issues right now that we feel are strongly needed to be addressed with. There could be a lot of discussion on it, but we feel that it's something simple. And as you said, thinking from our perspective, a way of actually starting this process and understand, East Lansing has done a similar approach. They've done a number of amendments and have been doing it for approximately three years, something like that, our attorney has said. And then this is a similar type of approach that's been done by a number of other communities as they've looked to fix these items in order to be able to do it without significant work and everything else that needs to be done in terms of trying to figure this all out. And I think this is a great way to move us forward and at least bring us up to speed on some of the things that just need to be done.
Very good. And as you mentioned earlier, some of the more substantive changes are right. There are some more substantive changes that are being recommended, but those will come about in subsequent months and years, and there will be ample time to have community discussions and debates on the merits of those proposals.
Correct. And a number of these items may, we would like to see, you know, we want to be consistent moving ahead, but if we don't feel that they're something we want to change or we need more time to discuss, we can postpone them. The idea is that if we can keep going and trigger it or schedule them with the regular elections that are happening, we don't have to necessarily, you know, spend a lot of time in terms of extra work and doing elections that are going to happen on a regular basis. The community will be familiar with it and hopefully will be able to participate.
Very good. Well, again, for the record, on behalf of myself and the city, we want to thank the members of the Charter Review Working Group, Chairperson O'Toole, Council Rep. Gierba, and then Members Tihar, Schneider, Fozdick, and LaForte, along with the city attorney and city clerk Royal, who provided clerical support. I do want to reiterate a few points I made when I drafted a memo to council in May, and I had made some public comments in addition. So there were three primary, there was three primary focuses when I asked council to establish and approve this group. One was to modify and improve diction and word choice that existed throughout the charter, which was no longer appropriate or stale, to eliminate or clarify items that have been invalidated by state or federal statute. And then third, finally, and most importantly, is to make recommendations that would improve the organizational efficiency of the city of Celine. And I think that group has accomplished the goal that was established by this body. I'll be in favor of the subsequent motion to move forward and put what I believe is some very innocuous language on the February ballot. And I look forward to having more discussions with staff, council, community stakeholders, and residents about additional changes which would likely be submitted for the electorate to consider in subsequent years. With that, I would open it up for questions to, well, they would be best addressed by the chair of the working group, which would be City Manager O'Toole or our council rep, Mr. Gierba. Councilmember Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the volunteers who worked together with us. One of the things that I will say to the community is this is how you can get involved. The council and the city staff have essentially a whole bunch of skills. If you have skills in this community and you want to volunteer to help support on things like the charter, you know, get in touch with the mayor, get in touch with the city manager. But this is how we get the community involved. We have experts who work, who work on these things for us. Secondly, I want to reiterate to the community the last part of this working group report, which is this proposed schedule. I do have a couple of questions about the schedule, but I want everyone to take a good look at the fact that this is spread out over a couple of years' time. We are not, you know, just throwing this onto the ballot and calling it a day. We're going to work through each one of these items. As mentioned, there are a couple that we would like to get onto the ballot, kind of the low-hanging fruit, if you will, that we can change as quickly as possible. But these are amendments and initiatives that the community is going to be voting on. So please read through these documents. Please listen to these, these meetings as we discuss these. And if you have comments at the beginning of the meeting about agenda items, feel free to do so. With that, I'd like to discuss the schedule and kind of how we proceed forward with this. I assume it's the city manager's office who's going to be kind of presenting these to council as your timeline sees fit, you know, when you're going to put them in front of us with the materials available, things like that. Is there any sort of a follow-up with this working group to see these through over the next few years, or is it going to strictly be in the hands of your office, Director?
There was a recommendation of the group that in three years' time, they reevaluate the position where elections have fallen, whether certain items need to be reframed, things of that nature. But as far as presenting resolutions, that will be on myself and our legal counsel. Our legal counsel will draft the resolutions, and I will work with the city clerk to make sure that we have the right timing, to have the state attorney general's office review them with sufficient time before the election.
Which, of course, you'll do a quick review just to make sure nothing additional has changed.
Yes.
Before the council office, things change quickly. Just a quick minor typo in here. I'm sure you meant February of 2025, not February 2023, downwards, the bottom of your timeline.
Correct.
Change will be made without objection.
You know, that's all I have for now. I just want to reiterate that this is a process. I thank Councilmember Gierba for his diligence on this. We will keep communicating this with the community as we go through these over the next few years. Happy to see us getting up into the 21st here with our texts.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Rice. Additional questions for the city manager or our council liaison? Councilmember Del Orco.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, to address some comments that were made at the outset of the meeting, will, will there be an opportunity for the public to provide input ahead of? I see that there's actual action item on the agenda to move forward with a couple of the proposed ballot language initiatives. And I do feel it's important that we allow the public to weigh in on those ideas and have a chance, either in a public hearing or a town hall.
We don't currently have a specific public hearing or a town hall schedule. Certainly, if council wanted to do a town hall on the topic of the, the report itself, I think there would not be an issue with that. Again, for the items that are recommended first, they were viewed as largely procedural. The amendments that we'll discuss next have to do more with how information is posted, able to be posted online now, and the meeting date of the first meeting in January. But certainly, other elements of these recommendations are more substantive. I don't know, it may make more sense to just have meetings around those substantive issues when it's closer to the time that we anticipate consideration of them.
Yeah, I certainly agree with that. A lot of this is, as the mayor described, innocuous and relatively benign. But as we approach some of the more significant substantive items, we may want to allow the public to have an opportunity to weigh in. I do feel, though, that Section 6.5 Public Notices is not an innocuous item in how we handle messaging to the public important information. If we limit it to only being posted on the website, that requires the citizens to seek out that information. None of that information is coming forward to them. We, I receive a print edition of the Celine Post every Thursday in my mailbox, and I think it's maybe not necessarily imperative that we continue print public notices, but there are a number of other options to just strike out the five locations that it would be posted and only require us to put it on the city's website. I do not feel it's sufficient.
So I do want to clarify, we are not talking about changing any legal notices or public hearing notices or public notices. The state statute governs how those are posted, and they still need to be posted in a periodical. This is simply related to the city's meeting synopses. So the city had a practice due to its charter of, before the days when we videoed all of our meetings, writing a brief synopsis, similar to meetings but with slight, meeting minutes, but with slightly more detail, that can be published in a newspaper. This, that's what that change is.
Okay.
It just allows us to make that web-based.
Okay, so ordinances, zoning changes?
All of that still needs to go into.
Would still be messaging, print, and?
We still, yes, we still have to mail notices to people within certain distances for zoning changes. This does not change any of that. This is, this is a unique rule or a unique process to the city of Celine that we have been publishing these synopses after every city council meeting.
Okay. I appreciate that clarification, and I apologize for my misunderstanding.
Thank you for the questions and comments, Mr. Del Orco. City Manager O'Toole, I would suggest, and I'd ask that you and Mr. Gierba and the other members of the working group perhaps assess this. It doesn't require a meeting, but maybe a, an exchange via email. I do think there's merit to, likely after the holidays, maybe in mid to, to late January, hosting an official town hall, not only to educate the electorate on the proposed changes that will be on the February 2024 ballot, but to also define the process and what voters can expect in the ensuing months and years.
And just to comment on it, there are a number of things that you have to do in order to get it on the ballot, and there's a lot of lead times that are required before the election. So what we recommend is still dependent upon what happens in those elections and so forth. So a lot of the schedule is, is temporary right now. We don't know exactly what's going to happen, depending on what the state changes, but we realize this, and that will give us plenty of time to make sure that that occurs.
Yep. And I actually think the timing of the February election allows us to get through the holidays, and then after the first of the year, get people to focus again on, on some local issues and maybe participate in a, in a town hall or public event to raise questions and concerns. Okay. Very good. Additional questions? Mayor Potem Dillon?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a quick statement first, saying thank you to the committee that reviewed the charter. It's, it's a tedious task, without question, to basically, it was written ambivalently so that it was subject to interpretation. And I think what they're probably doing now is looking to better clarify what the intent of those words are. So I appreciate what they're doing with this. I do have to say that moving forward, I would like to see a process where we do have a public hearing. I think a general town hall to talk about it would be fine, but having public hearings when we're going to go to put something on the ballot, I think is really an important aspect, giving the public, you know, some sort of an opportunity to come, because people may not realize as to what we're approving tonight and ballot language and such. So I would like to see that. Speaking of ballot language, just so I understand, when we're looking at this document that is several pages long, what would appear on the ballot is just the small portion, correct?
Correct.
So what it would be is that people would then have to seek the information, the specific details separately before making?
They will, yes. So the, the amendment language will show the true language of the charter with the changes proposed and a synopsis of what that change means.
So just, just that's all I wanted to say. So thank you very much for that.
Any additional questions or comments? Now that we have a motion on the floor moved by CO, seconded by Dillon to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say haven't. The motion carries unanimously. The subsequent motion is a new business item agenda, a new business agenda item 23-192, resolution to approve charter ballot language. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Manager O'Toole and adopt or not to adopt resolution number 23-192A and resolution 23-192B.
Move to acknowledge and adopt.
Moved by CO to acknowledge and to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rice. Again, I would defer to you, City Manager O'Toole. I think you, you provided an excellent summary on the previous agenda item, but if there's anything like you'd like to add at this time, we would welcome that.
Yes, again, I'll just reiterate for the public certification, this would, this would not change any statutory obligations we have to make public notices for certain items in a newspaper or direct mailing. This is really a change more geared towards internal operations, as well as the other amendment that you're looking at, which clarifies that the city is allowed to meet after the federal holiday of January 1st, which now per our charter, technically, it may have happened that we would have been required to meet on January 1st.
Very good. Councilmember Gierba's liaison to the working group, anything else you'd like to add?
Now that, I mean, some of these things where it's like interesting that we functioned this many years and didn't realize that, yeah, when the first Monday of the year happens, it can be on a federal holiday and our businesses close. So this is just kind of these small corrections that it's a start, and then as we fix these things, that as we move forward, it'll help us clarify and not be in conflict with our, our governors.
Any questions or discussion on the motion? Easy enough. Then we have a motion on the floor moved by CO, seconded by Rice, to acknowledge and to adopt the two resolutions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say haven't. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 23-193, stump grinder purchase. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from DPW Director Scherls and to approve or not to approve the purchase of a stump grinder from Bandit Industries in the amount of $63,306.00. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Moved.
Who's taking it? Kamara Sulek, just to acknowledge receipt or to acknowledge receipt, approve or not to approve?
Acknowledge receipt and to approve.
Very good. Is there a second? Mr. Seal, you're seconding that?
Yes, sir.
Easy enough. DPW Director Scherls, I think the microphones are working again. So if you want to make sure that the green light is illuminated at the base of that, you're welcome to remain seated and use that microphone, or you may come to the podium. Totally your preference. Again, this is pretty straightforward, so I don't.
Right. It's just as the memo says, we're going to purchase a new stump grinder. It's one with a lot more capabilities and current equipment that we own. We looked at a lot of different ways to accomplish getting rid of all the stumps that are coming from the store damaged trees, and we found it was such a good resale value that a lot of used stump grinders of this model are actually going for the, for the same or more than my new presence, this brand new, or brand, brand new stump.
Very good. And for the public certification, how often is the stump grinder used, and what is the lifespan on, on a piece of technology like this?
This, this stump grinder, I would imagine will probably put about 600 hours on it over, over 10 years. And with, with this type of hydraulics, the new hydraulic, then it probably won't be anything more than just maintenance, and it'll still be a good viable piece of equipment.
And how often is it used?
It's going to be a lot more than, than it used to be there. We get out on time available for, for stump grinding. The right weather, we'll probably out two, three times a month in, in obviously different, different levels, we're doing different things.
Yeah, right. Okay, very good. Are there questions for the DPW Director? Mr. Seal?
Yes. Mr. Scherls, is this a standalone unit, or is this mounted in front of that small four-wheel vehicle?
It's standalone.
Okay.
It's got traps, so we can get it up over the curb and get it to the stumps that, you know, even in the parks.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mayor Potem Dillon?
Thank you. The current stump grinder that you have, are you going to keep that, sell that?
We're, we're going to sell it. We're, through the auction.
Okay. And then when you sell equipment, and this may be for the city manager, I apologize, when we sell equipment, does those proceeds go back into the equipment fund?
Yes, that is the way that we're treating it. If, if it's something that would have otherwise come out of that fund, yes.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you very much.
Any additional questions? Mr. Gierba.
Mr. Scherls, will there be a big push to remove a lot of the stumps that were already cut down from trees and such, like on mills and those that have been there for a couple years?
Yes. We, we, we really need to get caught up, and we have a lot more to come down, over 200. And this, this, this piece of equipment will take a, a good-sized tree, tree stump in our extension in less than an hour.
Do you anticipate, do you have it to accomplish this year or a year period?
It'll, it'll be, it'll be more than a year to get caught up, just because of time available and staff.
Thank you. Any additional questions or discussion on the motion? Mr. Scherls, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We do have a motion on the floor then moved by Kamara Sulek, seconded by CO to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say haven't. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 23-194, 2023 Master Plan Draft. This is a simple motion to distribution approval for a 63-day comment review period for the public. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Community Development Director Harrington and to approve or not approve the distribution of the 2023 Celine Master Plan.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Gierba to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Del Orco. I'll get you on the next one, Mr. CO. Council, or excuse me. Community Development Director Harrington, do you care to make a brief comment? Then I'll defer to Mr. Gierba as the rep to the planning commission.
Absolutely. This is the start of the home stretch of the master plan, an effort that's been going on for over a year now. The state requires, through the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, that we have a 63-day review period for adjacent municipalities, utilities, railroads, the school board, et cetera, as well as the public at large. We've already engaged the public. We've had over 400, or about 400 survey responses, and we had three separate town halls on this issue. But now we have a formal draft that is now posted to our website. So for the next 63 days, the public is encouraged to review it, to comment on it, on ideas they'd like, they dislike, et cetera, and send that feedback to me so that we can incorporate it additionally over the next several planning commission meetings. We're going to be bringing specific chapters back for the planning commission to make more granular edits. They were involved in some of the directing of the planning, but they were not the people doing the actual writing of the plan. So this is an opportunity for them to know exactly the content that's going to be in this plan. And in general, it's more or less an aspirational document. Obviously, the future land use map in this plan has some legal ramifications for us, though.
Very good. Couple things. Can we make sure that we notify the entire city council of when planning commission will be having those granular discussions on more specific sections of the master plan, in the event that they wish to attend or know constituents, residents who, who may be inclined to do so?
Yes, absolutely. And I'll be sending you YouTube links to all the city council of that meeting after they've discussed. It starts this Wednesday, so 7:00 PM this Wednesday.
And in addition to that, I think it'd be helpful to share the linked, link of the draft master plan on all our social media pages during the next 63 days, and to make sure that there's at least one hard copy in the lobby for those who'd like to look at an actual, physical document.
Absolutely.
Mr. Gierba, anything you'd like to add?
Thank you for requesting the social media, because I think that would be helpful for people to actually look at the link on our site and compare it to the existing one. I agree, we had reviewed the subcommittee, Mr. Harrington and Planner Arbach. Their leadership on this has given us a document that I think is well-advanced of what we've probably seen in the last 20 years, and addressed a number of issues and concerns moving forward. It's probably a little better laid out, and has more information that I think will help us understand where we want to be five, 10 years from now. There are some items in there that I think even members of council will want to continue to review. So whatever input or whatever you feel that should be addressed, please consider asking us, members of planning, or myself, and we will make sure that it's discussed.
Very good. And I appreciate those comments. In my judgment, I think by any objective measure, I think this is the most thorough and thoughtful master plan that the city has produced in over 30 years. So kudos to everyone involved in the process thus far. Any questions for the Community Development Director regarding the 63-day comment period? Mr. Kamara Sulek?
Yes. What is the process for a community input as far as what, what do you, what, what do you do with it and to vet it and see, you know, the, you know, the worth of it and how to put, how to add it or not to add it? How, how does that work?
Right. So the, the plan as a whole is aspirational. So we take any comment. It doesn't have to be necessarily based on land use, which is kind of the crux of the plan, but it can be issues they see with our parks, issues with traffic safety, even on roads that are outside of our control. But we're essentially just kind of recording all that information, because regardless of whether it's actually featured in the content of the plan, it then becomes a piece of the public record. So we can go to MDOT and say, hey, well, you know, although we don't have any jurisdiction over US 12, we had 150 residents say they don't feel safe walking in Celine because of road conditions on US 12. So even if it's not worked directly into the strategy of the plan, because it's irrelevant to necessary land use that we can control, we still use it kind of as, as another means of documenting public opinion and public perception of our community.
Right, and a data point.
Right. And, and I think our, the plan does try to reflect the general trends we've seen, but it's all somewhat subjective in that sense that there are a lot of different trends that you could identify. But we've tried to use professionally what we think we're actually able to accomplish legally, pragmatically, et cetera, and marry that with a lot of the public feedback that we've gotten.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Rice, I believe you had a question?
I would like to follow up on Mr. Kamara Sulek's question. How do you want the public to provide you feedback? Is there an email address? Is there a web form?
Yeah, so on the website, it's one of the first things underneath the banner. If you go to cityofceline.org, it's like the first link on the bottom left, right below the head banner, in any manner that you feel most comfortable in. If it's a phone call, I'm happy to take your feedback over phone call. I will write it down. If it's a text, my office cell phone is on there as well, email, whatever you feel most comfortable sharing information or feedback on the plan, please feel free to do so.
That's great. A second to that. Could you please, I could do it as well, but a nice summary would be nice. Send this to Historic District Commission with a little summary and where we should focus perhaps in one of our meetings?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I know you already presented beforehand to the question. And then lastly, I wanted to address one of our public comments from Mr. Chick McPham. As, as Mr. Harrington said, this is, the master plan is sort of the, the hopes and dreams and aspirations for the city. We are going to start our strategic planning sessions again as well with council and with city staff coming soon. So to address that, yes, we, we do understand that a strategic plan is very important to continue to move these things along forward. So I just wanted to address that. That's all. Thanks.
Again, any additional questions? No? Oh, Mayor Potem Dillon?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment and just say that I really appreciate that the style of this document now is more action-based than just a stagnant data file. I really appreciate that there's, there's a lot of tangible goals to it that we can, we can measure. If that's, you know, are we actually doing what we're supposed to be doing? Because it shouldn't just be a cut-and-paste document year after year, every five years.
Yeah, absolutely. I would say the biggest change is the previous implementation section of the 2017 plan was about two pages of text, give or take. The new one stretches over 20. And obviously, that needs to be condensed. Some of it was redundant. I made an Excel table, trying to format Excel and the Word as a challenge in and of itself for anybody in this room who's ever experienced that. So, yes, I think implementation was absolutely the, the main crux of how we're going to change this plan for the better. The content wasn't necessarily an issue, is where are we going to go with this content? So.
Thank you.
Anything further? Then we have a motion on the floor moved by Gierba, seconded by Del Orco, to acknowledge and to approve the distribution of the 2023 Celine Master Plan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say haven't. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 23-195, dual auger system at the wastewater treatment plant. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Wastewater Treatment Superintendent Briggs and to approve or not to approve the purchase of a dual auger system with bagger from Dupren with the purchase and installation performed by Midwest Power in the amount of $183,251.80.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Gierba to acknowledge and approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. Mr. Briggs, your memo was pretty straightforward, but if you'd care to make some comments for the record, we would appreciate that.
Certainly. In the past, I brought this piece of equipment up to your, to your attention for the potential of removing debris before we get our new final fine bar screens. I think it's very important that we start now, and the fact that we can repurpose this piece of equipment either into a, another lift station or be able to resell it, I think will, it'll make itself very useful.
Very good. Any questions for our Wastewater Treatment Superintendent? Mr. Kamara Sulek, do you have a question?
Yes. So there's a, there's a screen involved. Are there replacement, periodically replacement parts for this?
It's not, the screen is more of a, just to allow water to go through it. Basically, the, there's two augers in there that, that as the water goes through, the screen stops the rags, and then the augers elevate them up out of the, out of the influent pit so that they can be put in a, a bagging system and into the garbage. So there's not a lot of, not a lot of wear and tear on this. I doubt we'll have much wear and tear even in the amount of time that we'll be using it.
And so they don't save a lot of time with your staff as well?
Yes. And we'll, we'll definitely, and we'll probably get 90 to 95% of the debris out that we're not getting out right now.
Wow, that's a big improvement.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Potem Dillon, did you have a question?
I do. I think Mr. Kamara Sulek just asked about, I was, my question was about the manual aspect of it and your labor, because right now, it's a very labor-intensive process.
Correct.
So will that basically be removed, that aspect of it?
Well, we'll still have to pay attention, because during high flows, not everything will be able to go through this. It'll only handle 1.5 million gallons.
Right.
Per day. So for high flows, there still will some, be some debris that goes to the old bar screen, and we'll have to keep an eye on that and clean that is necessary, but it'll be much less to, that we have to deal with.
Fantastic. Well, thank you for being so resourceful on that. My only other question was on the bid, under notes, it had said that the cost does not include bypass pumping or a dumpster. So will there be additional costs for those or those pieces that we don't need?
We're planning on doing the bypass pumping ourselves.
Okay.
Just a matter of having a, a plug in the line and using our pump that we're using for bypass right now over at Maplewood in that situation. For the, I wouldn't imagine it'd be more than a few hours at a time that they'll need bypass to get down in there and actually perform the work.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Del Orco?
I just want to understand how it's working. Does it just go upstream of the bar that's already there?
Yes, there's a, there's a pit basically in front of the influent building, and the bar screen's back in the influent building.
Right.
So this is going to be outside of that in front of it. It's actually going to have two weirs, I guess, that two weirs, I guess, that actually guide the flow into this thing out of the pipe that comes into that pit.
Okay.
So it'll be, they'll kind of taper into that, and then anything that it can't handle just overflows.
Right.
Goes to the...
So do we only experience volume above what was stated here on wet weather events?
Usually, yes. Yes. I mean, we're usually averaging between 1.3 and 1.5.
So this will do the lion's share of the work most of the days?
Definitely.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any additional questions? Bill, thank you. Mr. Briggs?
You're welcome.
Any subsequent debate or discussion on the motion? Mr. Girba?
Yes, as Mr. Briggs had mentioned, you know, if this could be repurposed in other lift stations, we still continue to experience a problem with flushables and all those items in our stations that in one particular neighborhood continues to be an issue, and we have yet to figure out what that is. So we may need to continue to go back and look at enforcement and such, which is the network. What is it, Bill? Which neighborhood is that lift station?
Breckinshire.
Breckinshire, thank you.
Very good. If there's nothing further, we do have a motion on the floor moved by Girba, seconded by Dillon to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Ayes have in the motion carries unanimously. The last action item on the agenda this evening is new business item 23-196 DTE gas franchise ordinance number 859. This will be a motion to acknowledge received of the memo from City Manager O'Toole and to approve or not to approve the first reading of the renewal of a 30-year DTE gas franchise ordinance number 859.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Oh, boy. Let's do, let's start with just a motion to acknowledge. That was moved by Girba. Mr. Sulek, would you be amenable to seconding that?
Yes, sir.
Very good. City Manager O'Toole, would you like to begin?
Certainly. So the 30-year franchise agreement for gas services has recently expired as of earlier this year. In negotiating that new ordinance with representatives from DTE, we identified some additional language around expectations to inform the city of intended repairs and reimbursement related to any expenses that might arise associated with repairs that may have caused damage to city property. This has been vetted by our legal counsel, and the revisions, as well as the existing language approved. Much of what's contained in the agreement is governed by a larger state statute, so there are certain limitations to what can be requested and contained in the agreement.
But to your earlier point, your office and legal counsel reviewed this. Are you comfortable with the ordinance being, well, approving the first reading this evening?
Yes.
Okay, very good. We do have some guests from DTE, Molly Lumpert-Coy, our regional representative, and then also a representative from the gas division. So Molly, maybe you could start and then introduce your colleague who is with us this evening. We appreciate your patience tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Merle and council. I have with me Brian Fowler is with our DTE gas operations on Michigan Ave. Brian's a Saline resident as well. So again, thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you with a franchise gas renewal. It's pretty standard. It allows us to get in and maintain our operations. A couple of things, it's revocable by will at the council or DTE. It's non-exclusive, so you can have secondary providers. But it basically just spells out our ability to work together and collaboration. We notice you of any major investments that are going on by DTE gas, and certainly we look for opportunities to collaborate as well.
Very good. Brian, would you care to share any remarks?
Nothing specific. I do want to thank the city, everyone on the council for their continued cooperation and work with DTE. We've recently completed the project at Maple and Clark on our end. We do have a small meeting tomorrow regarding that. So I want to say thank you for everyone's cooperation and allowing us to get in there and do some much-needed maintenance to our infrastructure.
Very good. Hang tight, because there may be some questions best addressed by either one of you, but at this time, I'd open it up for questions for either our guest from DTE or the city manager. I'll start with Mr. Girba and then transition to Mr. Del Orco.
This may be with the city manager and also for DTE. Knowing that our infrastructure is fast approaching, a lot of it 70 years in age and failing, and in terms of we've had a number of projects where we've had to tear up the roads as a result of, you know, gas leaks and such after we've completed them, what guarantees or what can you provide us with the issue of being preemptive and proactive and working with our replacement of these lines in our streets?
So let me just share that with the MPSC, we have a gas main renewal program, and it starts with the oldest communities, the oldest mains that exist within the state of Michigan. Consumers Energy does as well. So we are working through a process of about 20 years where we're going through and switching those out in various communities. Saline is fortunate that its infrastructure is not as old. It's not as old as certain areas of the state. So we started in Detroit, into currently now within Washtenaw County. We've got Ypsilanti, parts of Ann Arbor. You know, we'll be working our way around the rest of the county. Probably within the next eight years, we'll be probably here in front of you for Saline. So we did meet with city staff about this. I want to say it was a year, year and a half ago, and kind of talked through that. But again, Saline being one of our newer communities, it will be on the horizon within the next, you know, eight years or so.
What's considered the average lifespan of a line in which you would begin considering replacement of it?
Yeah, do you want to?
I can, I can give a little bit of insight. I would, nothing can guarantee lifespan. There's weather, initial conditions when the line was put in. Some of the lines are older, could potentially be from 40s, 50s. That's something we can't guarantee until we actually see it. What I would say is that we do have a very robust leak survey program where we do survey all of our lines, cast, steel, and plastic, pretty consistently and continuously. And anything that does come up in this area in Washtenaw County comes to particularly the station that I work at, and we move on those things as quickly as possible with notifications to the city and to residents if anyone is impacted.
Are there any materials that are more susceptible to failure at this point in time that you learned that we have may have them in our city?
Specifically, the, anything that would be in Saline very minor, but could potentially be some of the cast iron infrastructure. However, most of the cast iron here is actually operating pretty well. We do monitor that very consistently. So anything that is going in that's new is all plastic. So if a service line gets renewed, or the piece of main that we put in between At Main and Clark, that's all plastic, which is what we're moving towards. But I would say as far as the city goes and the current infrastructure, it operates very efficiently.
Whatever we can do to make sure that we're proactive in this, because I think that has been our big concern, that when the citizens see a street that's brand-new that we spent millions of dollars on it, and having to rip a hole into it, and then for the years succeeding after that to be a pothole and a problem for decades, they do get concerned. The other thing I would like to ask and see that, we do have historic neighborhoods, and I know one project that recently was completed on North Ann Arbor Street was a major concern to members of that community, and however we can work towards what is considered a historic accommodation, I guess I would say. And I don't know how you work that in other neighborhoods like Ann Arbor's, West Side, or Detroit.
We certainly do. We work very closely with the Historic Commission, and we work to abide by their ordinances and their guidance. We work with the planners, you know, to make sure that wherever we place, you know, if we're moving a meter out, that we're placing it according to guidelines of the Historic Commission. We actually had a very good, very good process with Ann Arbor and with Detroit. Both had very older historic districts.
That'll be helpful, because even working in the right of way, I think that's kind of concerns. When you put fence and things in there, it does change the neighborhood and what you see and things. So that'll be great. We will look forward to that, including that as part of our development with our GPW manager. Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Del Orco?
I think my question is mainly for the city manager and the drafting of the language or in the red-line version. In contemplating some of the comments we received earlier this afternoon or this morning, is there something that precludes us from requiring or providing language that requires a coordination of the aging infrastructure with when we decide to replace and build our streets? Is there any statute that precludes us from being able to do that? Because that would be in the best interest of both parties and seeking economies of scale and having them not have to reimburse us if they tear up a road if it's coordinated with current capital improvement projects or road resurfacing projects to begin with.
I cannot speak to what the statute would or wouldn't allow to that extent, but I'm happy to bring the question to our legal counsel and ask for clarifications. Certainly, this is the first reading, so if between the first and second reading, we're able to identify whether that change would be amenable, we could present that.
Yeah, that's certainly something that I would like to see, given that this is a 30-year deal. I'd like to get it right if we're locking ourselves down for 30 years.
That question can be asked of legal counsel without objection. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge that we have to put forward a list of where we're moving our GRP from year to year, and it has to be approved by the Michigan Public Services Commission. So, you know, there's some things that we have flexibility to do on, and when we're able to collaborate, we certainly work towards that. But there may be some things that we're limited, because you've got to get into a queue of funding and approval through our regulator, which is the MPSC.
Okay, fair enough. See what we can arrange.
Additional questions for our guests or for city staff? Councilmember Rice, and then I'll jump to Councilmember Kamir Sulek.
I want to touch back on a couple of my colleagues I mentioned as far as community relations goes. We often get questions. What are the flags? What's this hole? What's this? What's that? And one of the things that we can't do as a councilor, as the city, is answer it very clearly or quickly without having to do a little research, reach out to DTE, try to find out. What is the system for proactivity as far as reaching out to the community members, explaining that there's going to be a giant event in front of their 120-plus-year-old home, you know, things of that nature that will really spark conversation within the community? And how can we help reiterate that instead of just saying, you know, well, it's DTE's project, we got to dig around and figure out what it is?
So usually at the end of the year, we try and get an understanding of what projects you may have on the horizon, and we share what our major projects are. We may do press releases, we may do social media outreach. A lot of the time, our facilities folks are in the community. They're knocking on doors, they're meeting with customers. So a lot of that is human-to-human touch, you know. So, but certainly we're here, and I'm very, I hope you feel I'm very responsive. If there's anything that comes up, you know, I live in Saline, so Saline's very important to me as well. So if I can ever be of assistance to you in getting back information, I'm happy to do that.
I've noticed that you've responded to some things on Facebook, and I truly appreciate that. I think that's great coming from a DTE voice instead of coming through a third-party, through the city, through the council, kind of a voice. So I appreciate that. Maybe at some point, we can have some sort of a conversation with the city manager and our PR generalist and just kind of get some sort of a workflow-type thing where we can help coordinate some of these communications with our community members. As you continue to build up your infrastructure, we're going to continue to see a lot of these projects, and we want to be able to answer in a timely, efficient manner.
Absolutely. And one of the things I do kind of on the side is I do do social media outreach. So for example, during the storms, I was giving ETAs and putting that on in Saline Post, et cetera. So I try, you know, to do that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Councilmember Kamir Sulek?
Yes, thank you for letting us ask you a whole bunch of questions.
Absolutely.
Most of mine were already answered. But being that the last contract was 30 years, and this is another 30 years, a lot of things could have, you know, could have changed. What are the most substantive, if any, changes from the last contract to this one?
I think the attorney had just asked for, you know, information about acknowledgement of any large infrastructure projects that are going on, that we come together with requests for any easement or even, you know, sketches of projects, that all of that take place. I'm trying to remember if there were any others.
Yeah, they're trying to abide by at least a 24-hour notice when there's emergency call-outs, so that we have an opportunity to message to the community on things like that. But yes, largely more geared towards improved collaboration and certainly some responsibility related to if things do end up cutting into new city infrastructure or city infrastructure that needs to be replaced, making sure that we are replacing it in kind.
There's no, there's no cost or penalty concerns at all for either party, or?
I don't believe so. I don't think we've had those issues in the past. I mean, we've worked pretty cooperatively, you know, over the last 30 years. And while 30 years may sound like a long time, it, you know, it's just a standard period of time.
Gotcha.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just a little daunting, 30 years. What are things going to be like 30 years from now for us, right?
We hope to be alive.
That's definitely one of them.
Most of all of our franchises are just for that period of time.
Well, I have a lot of confidence in your responsiveness, as you've shown, and since both you live in Saline, obviously have a vested interest in, so that gives some assurance.
Thank you.
Very good. Any additional questions? Mayor Potem Dillon?
Thank you. And it's just a quick question for the city manager. Do we have a similar agreement with the DTE electric?
Yes. Don't quote me, but I believe we updated that in like 2018 or so, within the last five or six years.
Yeah, I think we just recently renewed, yeah, around then.
Thank you.
If there's nothing further, there is a motion on the floor. Brian, Molly, thank you both. Appreciate your time and patience this evening. There is a motion on the floor at this time to simply acknowledge received of the memo from the city manager. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Ayes have in the motion carries unanimously. And is there a motion now to approve or not to approve?
Point of view.
Go ahead.
Do we need to adopt at this point? Is it required?
No, this is just the first reading.
So we really don't have to do an adopt and approve? We can just, or we have to adopt and approve the reading?
I guess you call it acknowledge and acknowledge?
I think it says acknowledge and approve.
It's just approving the first reading. So you're not adopting the first reading. So to be, be to acknowledge and approve.
You could theoretically make changes and modifications before the final ordinance is adopted.
I move to approve the first reading.
Okay, moved by CO to approve the first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamir Sulek. Is there any additional discussion? There is none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Ayes have in the motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to the discussion portion of the agenda. Councilmember Rice, any discussion items?
I just want to bring to the public's attention that we will be discussing dispatch next week. So if you would like to attend and provide public comments, the agenda will be posted online on Wednesday evening, so please read it thoroughly, and we will be having our discussion at council on the 18th.
Councilmember Del Orco, any discussion items?
Not at this time, thank you.
Councilmember Girba?
Not at this time.
Two, just a reminder that this weekend, Friday and Saturday, is Oktoberfest, our signature fall event. So I hope to see everyone uptown, and we thank the organizers and the volunteers. And second, this is for City Manager O'Toole, but also for the city clerk, and I guess Community Development Director as well. And I'll be very candid, I've been personally annoyed this past week by multiple solicitors in my neighborhood, and I haven't noticed one that has the appropriate identification. And to me, that's a quality-of-life issue, and if I'm being annoyed, I suspect there are other residents as well. So I guess the point I'd like to make is if we could do a little blast or some messaging online and on social media about what our regulations are, and to ensure that people who are soliciting actually have badges, that would be great.
Is this the water? Is it?
It was several. I took some notes I can share with you.
Because the quality, the water quality does not need?
No, these were not water quality.
Okay.
Just as a note, we do have an ordinance on soliciting. You have to be licensed.
Correct.
I think we had one licensed person this year.
Right.
So if you got one that was not a book salesman, they're illegally soliciting, I can only enforce it, our code enforcement staff can only enforce it if we know the names and you call us when they're at your house.
Correct.
And even if they leave, we can stop them and say, hey, you can't be soliciting here. You need a license.
Just want to make sure that residents know to ask to see a badge.
Yes.
Because our ordinance is very clear. There's no ambiguity on that point. They have to have the appropriate license to be going door-to-door. Very good. Mayor Potem Dillon, any reports or announcements?
Just quickly, ZBA did not meet. There was nothing on the agenda, so it did not meet in September. But the Committee for Committee Oversight did meet, and we, after a lot of deliberation, we have created a wonderful PowerPoint presentation, and that will be held on Monday, October 9th at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. And what that is, is a presentation for current committee chairs and committee members. And it's going to sort of outline just some guidelines as to how our committees function, what the role is, that staff plays. And just to get everybody on the same page about it, I think it'll be very beneficial. If you are a committee member who is not able to attend, don't fret, because these presentations will actually be coming back to each individual committee to be presented at that level. But we do like to see the chairs, at least the chairs, at the first presentation.
And there's a little flyer that was put in each of your mailbox by PR Generalist Massey. So please share these. And to Mayor Potem Dillon's point, we want to put the strongest possible emphasis on making sure that the chair, or co-chair, or vice chair at a minimum is there. And I hope that a minimum is there. And I hope that each of you will attend as well. Unless Mayor Potem, Dylan has anything else. Mr. Sulek, any discussion items, reports, announcements? No. Councilmember Kamira Sulek?
Not at this time.
Easy enough. Then we come to the second public comment period under the Open Meetings Act. Any person may come forward at this time, make comment or question of city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Good evening. Chairman Fan, again, I have several things I'd like to repeat and also just like to know for you, if you don't know, that's number one is the October 15th at 12:00 PM, Celine Area School invited everybody to attend this free luncheon. You don't have to have a million dollars, although it is fundraising. And last several times, I see the Ms. Dylan and her husband attended. Food is wonderful. I think better than Chinese food. And the most important is they see the student, they get grant and how they work. And also, it is a good thing for Celine city leaders of you and also the school board to join together. So, this is number one. Number two is that I have already gave a jump drive inside half, almost one gigabytes information of the picture I took about the wonderful meeting, joint meeting between the city and the SAS Board of Education. And please pass along, I'm right now, I think in the midst, make way. And please, you see wonderful, not just the photos and all of you looking good, but also most important is ideas and work together to work for not just education and also it is for, to serve the city of Celine and the people. What is the last thing? Do I have?
One minute 16 seconds.
Okay, good. The third one? Let me try to remember. Oh, the important thing is about this strategic plan. And thank you for encouraging me to do that. I think it is very important to talk about the strategy because of Celine is located such a great strategic location geopolitically advantaged. We have open area. Of course, we have open space, better than any other place to see if we can make Celine a designation. Is that correct term? Sorry. Let attract all of the people, all over the world, come to Celine. And there are quite a lot of things we should really consider strategy to recover, rebuild about the legacies, quite a lot of things. So, therefore, please, I just cannot wait. And also, one last thing I want to thank Mr. Mayor, push me about the salt initiative. And with your encouragement, also, Mr. Sulek. And this is related with the strategy. So, thank you so much. Good night.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comments? Actually, at this time, you can talk about anything that's, anything that you'd like to talk about. There's no limit or restriction, but you'll have three minutes.
It was so great to be able to hear the last part as far as the city council and these did not work because of the mic, but thank you for your help. I was hoping that when I spoke about the first part of my concern regarding public comment and addressing the future as far as in the minutes of who spoke and maybe a little burb of what the item was they talked about. Did I come through at all? Was the council able to hear?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm hoping that it would be addressed because it is important when people get up and speak their concern. Thank you.
Any additional citizen comments this evening? I defer to the city clerk. Clerk Roy, did we receive any written comments in advance or during tonight's meeting? Actually, it would have to be in advance, in which the individual wanted their remarks read at this time. Easy enough. Then please note our upcoming meetings, including a public town hall this Thursday at 5:30 to discuss infrastructure projects, not only those that have been completed or are underway for this construction season, but also maybe even more importantly, what you can expect in 2024, 2025, and beyond. If there's nothing further to be brought before Celine City Council this evening, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn this regular meeting at 8:52 PM. Acknowledge first before I entertain that motion. We appreciate and apologize for the technical issues at the start of tonight's meeting. We appreciate everyone's patience. Thanks to Ben who worked through the issues and Tran for doing a little bit of pinch hitting and for filming for the first two, two-thirds of tonight's meeting. We appreciate that. Again, is there a motion to adjourn at 8:52?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Kamira Sulek. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.